I'd like to call this meeting the Clay County Commission to Order. We will begin with our invocation. Teresa, you are here. If you would please lead us.
Heavenly Father, in the spirit of this season, we come before you with hearts of gratitude. We are thankful for blessings and provisions, both big and small. We are thankful for the prosperity of Clay County, and I ask that you give all the commissioners wisdom and insight in leading us in continued prosperity, safety, and peaceful lives. We ask that you bless and protect our first responders. We are so thankful for them. We're also thankful for all the wonderful employees of Clay County. We ask you for strength and uncanny insights to face future challenges. Again, we just want to say thank you. In Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you. Please remain standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte.
Here.
Commissioner Withington.
Here.
Commissioner Lawson.
Here.
Commissioner Wagner.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
There we are. That brings us to approval of this evening's agenda. Commissioner Johnson?
Move to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion has been made for the approval of this evening's agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, not yet, I'll motion to you. Seeing none, well, you are recognized to close.
I'll close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner.
Hi.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Next on our agenda are going to be public comments. Citizens who wish to comment, if you could come up to the podium one at a time, make sure that the green light is on, so that your microphone is on, state your name, and then address your comments to the commission. So when you're ready, just please come forward.
Yes, I'm Tom Coutts, K-U-T-Z, and I'm here to just go on record to say that I very strongly oppose the future land use framework that's being put together by the planning and zoning department of this county. I think that this plan significantly affects the economic development of the area. It is agricultural area in Northern County. I mean, I have 60 acres in that area that is going to be designated as agricultural, and it has a significant impact on me because it restricts the division of that land to a minimum of 40 acres. I think that the restriction of any land in Clay County to less than 40 acres just makes a whole lot of sense because there's a lot of development going on in this county, and to stop that development doesn't make any sense economically and for the future of the county. And if this plan goes through and if it's enforced, it will stop the development of the county in our area, which is around just west of Holden. There's also a lot of green area to the south that I know nothing about, but I think the landlords in that area would also not be very happy about being restricted to dividing their land into less than 40 acres. So I just want to go on record at this level to say that we are strongly opposed to it, and I think that there's many things within this plan, or at least in our area, that don't make a lot of sense. So with that said, I can conclude my comments unless I've got any other questions.
Administrator, would you like to make any comments on the status of that report?
Correct. Just briefly, the comp plan has been before the commission. The commission did make a recommendation to the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve. The next step is it will be going to the Planning and Zoning Commission. They will hold a public hearing at that meeting. I believe it is December 3rd, December 3rd at 6 o'clock here in the chambers, and public is welcome to come and speak to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
That will be here?
It'll be here in this room, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to come forward and make any comments to the commission? Please make sure the mic is on. There you go.
I'm Sherri Coutts from Hope, Missouri, and I just want to say that this is an urban county. It's not a rural county, and we don't even get support from this county for our rural area. We have to go to Ray County, so I just don't feel that that's right, that we should select this land as remaining rural when this is actually an urban county.
Thank you very much. Any other citizens wishing to come forward and address the commission? Seeing none, that brings us to consent agenda. Administrator?
The consent agenda allows the commission to act upon items considered to be routine and approved in one motion. These may include items that have been reviewed by the commission in a prior session. There will be no separate in a prior session. There will be no separate discussion unless a commissioner requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. There are five items on the consent agenda this evening. The first item is approval of commission meeting minutes from November 7th and November 14th. Resolution 2024-315 is approving invoice payments for Clay County from November 9th through November 15th. There are 223 invoices totaling $1,499,664.38. 2024 Ordinance 35 is approving the renewal of the ordinance authorizing issuance of amusement and recreation licenses for the Clerk's Office. Resolution 2024-319 is approving the transfer within a fund in the amount of $35,000 for additional funding for water and sewer services for the remainder of 2024 for the Parks Fund, and Resolution 2024-321 approving a lease agreement for the Jesse James Bank Museum with Old Farm Holdings LLC.
Thank you. It's my understanding that there is going to be some discussion on this, so I'm going to ask Commissioner Johnson to make a motion, then I will go to Commissioner Lawson for any questions or comments she may have on the consent agenda. So Commissioner Johnson, excuse me.
Move to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Motion has been made for the approval of the consent agenda. Commissioner Lawson, I believe you wish to ask some questions or comment?
Yeah, I did on 2024-315. My question, well, there were two items on there that I had a question about. Both of those were made out to Piper Wind Architects. One was for $25,606.53. The other was for $7,358, and I just had wondered what those items were for.
Sure, absolutely. Piper Wind is our architect that's working on the Law Enforcement Resource Center. They are the design team on that project.
Okay, so all of these are for that law enforcement?
I'm going to defer to Deputy County Administrator Coutts.
Oh, okay.
The smaller one may be on the transition facility.
Good evening. Donna Coutts, Deputy County Administrator. Piper Wind is actively working on our transition house. They have been working on our LERC building as well. So without going to that specific one to tell you which one goes for which invoice, but I do agree that probably the $25,000 one is for our LERC projects, and the smaller $7,000 one is most likely the transition house that we are working on for.
Which one was the transition house?
That is for us to have a new location for the supervised visitation.
Which item was it? Or were they all together?
We just receive a bill from them and everything. I'd have to go to their actual invoice to itemize to tell you exactly which one went for what item.
Oh, okay. So just several projects that were working besides the LERC. It's also for the transition house?
Yes, and I'd be happy to come back next week if you want me to look up those two invoices for you.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, fine. That's all.
Did you wish to have any separate votes taken on any of the consent items?
I'm sorry.
Did you wish to have any separate vote taken on any of the consent items?
No, no.
Very well. Any further discussion on the consent agenda as proposed? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Hi.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
We have one issue on our regular agenda this evening. That's 2024-316. Administrator?
Resolution 2024-316 is approving invoice payments for the Clay County Prosecutor's Office for the period of November 9th through November 15th. There are six invoices totaling
Is there a motion, Commissioner Johnson?
Move to approve 2024-316.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2024-316. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Hi.
Commissioner Thompson?
I recuse myself.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Motion passes, five in favor, one recusal.
Next on our agenda are discussion items. We have one issue for discussion, 2025 Budget Overview Presentation by the Administrator. Administrator?
Thank you very much. Good evening, Commission. It is that time of year when we start working on the fiscal year for 2025. You know, as I thought back on the budget and the prior budgets and the county, I would have to say that we have a theme. And the theme for our budget and what has been for the county for a number of years is it's about change. The county has gone through an extraordinary amount of change over the years, and so I have a great quote here from Benjamin Franklin that "Without continual growth and without progress, improvement, achievement, success absolutely mean nothing." And we're supposed to change, and certainly Clay County has done that over the years. A lot of things have caused that change to occur. One happens to be the growth of the county. And so this chart is actually from the state of Missouri. It shows the population for the county every five years, beginning in 2000, with the state's projection of our population in 2025 and 2030. And so what you see here is the bars, which is the growth of the county every five years. And this is actually, you know, what I would say, a perfect growth pattern. It is a steady growth. It is not a lot of spikes where you are then seen with a tremendous amount of growth and having difficulty meeting the needs of that growth. So the county has been on a continuous growth that has been manageable. The red line actually indicates the county's status when you compare us to all the counties in the state of Missouri. There are 114 counties in Missouri, and in 2000, Clay County was the sixth largest county in the state of Missouri. In 2015, due to our population growth, we became the fifth largest county in the state of Missouri. And the state is projecting that we will hold that position in 2025 and 2030, even though in comparing to their growth projections for the other counties around the state of Missouri. With population growth comes an increase in our assessed valuation. As you know, we have a reassessment every odd year. And so again, we kind of had a steady growth in our assessed valuation. Some of that has to do with new construction and meeting the needs of the growing population, and also has to deal with growth in retail, which follows, you know, population growth along with industry. We did see some significant spike in 2021 and 2023. That is growth related, but it's also related to what we were seeing going on in the market around the country when it came to property values. So that's part of the change that the county has had over the years, but there are other catalysts that have created change for the county. Certainly COVID that we all experienced and taught us how to do things differently and how to manage and how to operate and meet the needs of our citizens. We've also had to meet the challenges of workforce market pressures. Over the last couple of years, the county has done things like implemented a retention incentive, taking a look at our benefits, how do we remain competitive within the market. Because we've changed how we do operation and certainly rely a lot more on technology, cybersecurity has certainly raised to the forefront of a priority for us in making sure that our information is secure. And the economic environment is constantly changing, and as we'll talk about a little bit later, that the county's revenue stream, the major revenue stream for us is sales tax. So we are driven by what happens with the economy, and we're a global economy anymore. You know, that has changed over the years. First, it was you were concerned about what was happening in Clay County, what was happening in Kansas City, what was happening in Missouri. Now we need to be worried about what's happening on the other side of the world because it has an impact on consumer confidence. And then we have the customer experience that has changed and evolved. We now have citizens who want conveniences. They want to have access to our services and be able to work with the county 24/7. And so how do we, again, rely on that technology and make those changes? And then certainly, the voter-approved Clay County Constitution also created some changes for this organization. With that change, you all have been very busy over the last couple of years in helping to develop policies and procedures and looking at ways to how to guide that change. The first item was the adoption of the strategic plan last year, and you've done a lot of things and set policies that align with that strategic plan, including the updating of the comprehensive plan that's coming up and being finalized. The financial and budget policies that were recently passed give us guidance. The update of the 15-year-old pay classification and compensation study that is underway. We took a look at our technical specifications for our road and bridges, bringing them up to today's standards and meeting those needs. So the commission has been very busy of creating some guidance for us and helping us prepare and guide how we're going to go through that change. With all of that, those things and policies that you've done are all in alignment with the strategic plan. The strategic plan that you endorsed has five key focus areas: safety and well-being, financially sustainable, economic opportunity, infrastructure, and being an employer of choice. So the 2025 proposed budget that's before you was built upon those guiding principles that you all have worked on so diligently the last couple of years and also aligned with the strategic plan. This chart shows you the organizational chart for the county. On the far right, you'll see that these are our elected office holders. We have four elected office holder positions: the assessor, the auditor, the prosecutor, and the sheriff's office. On the far left, you have the circuit court that is part of the county operations, and in the center is the administrative functions of the county. What is proposed in the 2025 budget is 568 full-time positions with 54 part-time positions. Should be noted that of those 568 full-time positions, 225 are in the sheriff's office. So 40% of our employees are dedicated to public safety in the sheriff's office. The 2025 budget does propose 3.5 additional FTEs in the 2025 budget, which is included in that 568 number. As we get into the budget, you know, I'm sorry, but we can't help but talk about numbers when we talk about the budget. And so what we have on this chart is the proposed budget and also comparing it to 2024 and 2023. So I'm going to start in the right column at the bottom for 2025, and the total authorized proposed budget next year is $175.9 million. However, we have some one-time money that changes substantially from year to year, and you can see that in the chart if you follow bond financing. In 2023, it was 1.4; now in 2025, it's $290,000. The ARPA funding made a big difference, from 19 million now down to 8 million in 2025. And I'm happy to say the grants have gone the other way. They were smaller in 2023 with 6.4, and we have in the 25 budget almost a little over $14 million. Because those fluctuate so much, it's hard to kind of do a comparison. So if we take the authorized budget and we take away these one-time funding, we then sort of get to the adjusted authorized amount, which for 2025 is $152.9 million. Comparing that to the adjusted budget for 2024, that's 11.3% increase in what's authorized. Now, we'll talk during the workshops and go into more depth about what's driving that increase. A lot of it has to do with simply inflationary costs in our materials, our contracts, our supplies that we do. Also, we're also expanding services and programs, and so we'll talk about that, along with enhancing our personnel package for our employees. So when we look at the authorized budget of $175.9 million, what are the sources of revenue for that? And so you see here in the pie chart to kind of depict those major revenue streams, the largest one is sales and use tax at 33.4%. So as I said earlier, the economy and how that impacts the county, it's certainly something that we keep our eye on because it's our largest revenue stream. That's followed in the sources of funding with our reserves of 28.8 million. You then see the next category is fees, fines, leases, and licenses, sort of user fees. It's about 12%. And then it's followed by transfers and grants that equal about 8% of the total sources for the authorized budget. But sales taxes, as I said, are our largest revenue, and so I want to spend a little time talking about the sales tax, what we have proposed in the budget for sales tax and use tax. And so I'm going to talk about the sort of rectangular box off to the right with the three different colors. So we currently have three different types of sales tax. The first one in the green box is our use tax, or people may refer to that as internet sales. And so what is in next year's budget is $15 million that we're projecting come from internet sales. I will say this is our fastest-growing sales tax. It is growing faster than our local sales with what I consider the brick-and-mortar sales. On our use tax, if we compare the 15 million to what we expect will be coming in this year by the end of the year, we're projecting about a 1.54% growth. So we're being a little bit conservative when it comes to next year's use tax compared to what we're receiving this year. However, I do want to spend a couple of minutes talking about budget to budget. Historically, for the last several years, probably since COVID, the county has been very conservative when we've been forecasting sales tax and use tax. And part of it is it was such an unknown on what COVID was going to do, and because we have to put our budget together so early in the middle of the year that we're sort of behind the eight ball on how much we think we're going to bring in each year. Because of our history, because of our trend analysis, we feel very comfortable with projecting our use tax at $15 million, which again is only about a 1.54% above this year's expected. But if you compare use tax budget to budget, that's a 46% increase in budget to budget because we've been very conservative and again, not really having enough years of trend analysis, which we do now have, that we're very confident with this number. The second category is our law enforcement sales tax, and so that's kind of in the red oranges box, and we're projecting that to be $6.2 million. Now, our law enforcement sales tax is a 1/8 cents sales tax. It is paid at brick-and-mortar, so it's not part of the internet sales tax. For that particular growth over what we're expecting this year is about a 5% growth. But again, if you do budget to budget, that's about a 7.2% growth from our '24 budget to our '25 budget. And the third category that we have is our general sales tax. That is a 3/4 of a cent sales tax that is paid again at brick-and-mortar stores here in the county. That is projected to be $37.5 million. Compared to what we believe our expected is for this year, that's about a 1.8% growth over expected. So again, fairly conservative numbers for growth next year based on what we're seeing this year. However, if you're comparing budget to budget, that's about a 7% increase, which helps us on the budgeting side of it, that we're becoming sort of what I called it, trued up in what we are forecasting our sales tax to be. Now, because of the general sales tax, as part of a direct allocation of the general sales tax, that 37.5 million, we have the pie chart that is on the left. So of that 37.5 million, the budget ordinance that is being proposed would have 62% of that, or $23.3 million, going to the general fund. We have 8.9 million, which is 24% of that general sales tax, going directly to the law enforcement fund. And then we have the TIF fund, which again, how we do that is, you know, from a budgeting standpoint, we take a percentage of our general sales tax and our law enforcement sales tax and transfer it to the general fund. Historically, when I first got here, the county was doing 10% of our sales tax into the TIF fund. Well, we've had TIFs that have paid off, right? They don't exist anymore. And so this year's budget, you may recall last year, we recommended to you, and what's in this year's budget is a 7%. We're continuing to see more TIFs retire. Also, looking at our trend analysis, so what we're projecting for next year to go into the TIF fund is 6%. So that is a 1% difference from what's in this year's budget. We have a direct allocation to the road and bridge fund, about $2.3 million, and then a 1% of that or a small amount of 445 is directly going into the park fund. So that's kind of a direct allocation of that $37.5 million. This is a sort of a different chart, and I was trying to give a graphic to help explain the direct allocation of the sales and use tax combined. So the previous amounts I was talking about was simply just the general sales tax. This is both sales and use tax combined, so the $58.7 million. How is it directly allocated based upon the proposed budget? And so if you look at the circle on the inside, you'll see the general fund has 47%. So what we're saying here is 47% of the $58 million is going directly into the general fund. 25% of that is going into the law enforcement fund, and then you see the chart at the right that gives you actual percentages, which is that inner circle. The outer circle, when you look at the general fund in blue, well, The outer circle, when you look at the general fund in blue, what we tried to depict there is sort of graphically, okay, a 47% is going to the general fund. How much of that is really coming from that general sales tax? And how much is coming, in this particular case, the use tax? If you follow to the law enforcement, they're getting 25% of the total of $58.7 million, and you can kind of see how much of that is coming directly from the general sales and how much it is coming from the law enforcement sales tax. Again, that is statutorily passed by the voters. It must be spent on law enforcement, so it goes directly into the law enforcement fund. I would like to pause here and talk just briefly about the use tax in the general fund. This is new. The county has historically, with our use tax, have allocated it to three other funds, three separate funds. They're all capital funds, Capital General, Capital for Road and Bridge, and Capital for Parks. So what we are proposing in next year's budget, because we're not taking any way from the use tax into the TIF fund because you don't pay TIF, because none of the internet sales are in a TIF district, and so all use taxes then become available. So we're recommending, we're increasing the amount from use tax going into the Capital General, the Capital Road and Bridge, and the Capital and Park, but it also leaves some additional funding that we are proposing go into the general fund to help with some of the operating costs with the general fund that continues to increase. And so you see there, by funds that are getting direct sales and use tax, you can see internal circle, how much are they getting, and the outer circle is kind of telling you where all the different, how much of it is general, or how much it is use tax, or how much it is law enforcement tax. So that is a direct allocation of the sales tax, but we're not done there. So the other piece of the pie is when we adopt the budget, included in the general fund expense budget, is a transfer of general sales tax to other funds. And primarily, that transfer goes into the law enforcement fund. And so what is proposed, and we'll get into it deeper when we talk about the general fund, $12.5 million is recommended to be transferred from the general fund to the law enforcement fund for budgeting purposes. So when you do that, it changes the circle. Law enforcement now gets a budget allocation of $58.7 million, of 47% of it. So it almost flips, and now the general fund is keeping 26% of it. Now, that additional general sales transfer is not a direct transfer. What we write into the ordinance is that it is transferred to the law enforcement fund as needed. So at the end of next year, they may not need all $12.5 million, and what they don't need would then stay into the general fund. But for budgeting purposes, we would make the assumption that it would all go into law enforcement. And so that kind of changes the allocation when you look at the budget allocation versus the direct allocation. Property tax is one that certainly our voters have, are interested in. So this chart shows you how much revenue is projected in 2025 from property tax for the county. Total is $6.7 million. And so you see in the chart to the right, we have three, or three property tax, but there is no park tax mill levy, but the park fund does get some surtax. But we have the general mill for the county, which is .02. This is reflective of the action that was taken by the commission, where you voluntarily rolled back the general mill levy by 20%. And then we have the road and bridge, which also gets some surtax funding. So the pie chart on the left will show you then, of that $6.7 million, 74% of it is going to the road and bridge fund. General fund gets 20% of it, and the park is 6%, which is really just the surtax that they receive. And then for informational purposes, we put down in the chart also the mill levy that was approved for the three entities, the senior services, the mental health and development disabilities, what that mill rate is, and then what that revenue projection is in 2025 for those agencies. So when we go back to the authorized budget of $175.9 million, how's that money spent? 38% of it is in personnel costs. 36% of it is in contractual. 11% is in capital, and then we have 8% in transfer and 7% into commodities. But again, remember, this is the authorized budget, and included in the authorized contractual is our reserves. We get authorization for every dollar that the county owns, and that's certainly not what we consider our operating budget. So this next slide kind of walks down to how do we get to what is the county's operating budget for 2025? So we start out with the total authorization of $175.9 million. We've already talked about earlier on that first slide about ARPA money and bond money, so if that's set aside, because it's one-time money of 160, brings us down to $167 million. Included in that is transfers. And so transfers are really sort of a double expense entry. So if you think about it, we're going to transfer from the general fund. So to transfer it out of the general fund, I have to expense it in the general fund. I'm going to send it to the law enforcement fund, and so law enforcement shows that as a revenue, and then they turn around and they expense those same dollars. Well, I know we'd all like to do it, but you can't spend a dollar more than once. And so for accounting purposes, we have to show it as a double expense entry. But when we're trying to really get to the operating budget and what the county needs, we would reduce that transfer. So that brings us down to $153 million. But included in that, as I mentioned earlier, is our reserves and our carryover and rainy day funds, and so we don't want to spend those. We want to keep those in reserve, so when we reduce that down, then we see that the operating budget for the county being proposed is $138.7 million. So how are we spending those funds? And so we want to go back and look at it from your focus areas that are identified in the strategic plan, and there are five. So the largest area, focus areas, budget is safety and well-being. 40% of the operating budget goes to safety and well-being. 29% of it goes to infrastructure, and 12% goes to the employee of choice, 11 to financially sustainable, and 8% to economic opportunity. And so if you think about it, and you add safety and infrastructure together, 69% of the operating budget is going to the top priorities of the commission that you've identified when it comes to safety and well-being and infrastructure. So tonight, I'd like to take just a few minutes and talk about those focus areas. And again, we will get into a lot more information, a lot more depth in the workshops that are coming up, so this is at a high level on a county-wide basis. But safety and well-being's total operating budget is a little over $55 million. And so if you look at the left side, that shows you the service areas that we identify into the focus area of safety and well-being. That includes the sheriff's office, which is the largest budget, taking 69% of the safety and well-being operating budget, followed by juvenile, that has 11%, and then the prosecutor's office has 9%, and then you see some of the other smaller departments and services that we have in the focus area of safety and well-being, which includes our public administrator, our medical examiner, our 911 fund, domestic violence, and our opioid settlement fund. So those are the service areas that are in the well-being and shows you the allocation that they receive out of that budget. On the far right, you'll see by expenditure category, how are we spending the funds in safety and well-being? Well, 65% of it is on personnel. We can't provide those services if we don't have our employees, along with 17% is contractual, 13% is in capital, and 4% is in commodities. So the funding for our safety and well-being of the $55 million primarily comes from the law enforcement fund. 57% of that budget is in the law enforcement fund, followed by 26% in the general fund, 9% is from capital fund, and then we have some of our smaller funds from the sheriff's office or the court's office, and then our emergency fund of 911 is 2%. So what are some of the highlights that you're going to find as you go through the budget process? You'll hear more about these during the workshop. In the sheriff's office, what we're proposing is an increase to the detention officers, their starting salary, and every detention officer within the organization to address compression issues. There is a proposed increase of $7,000. The sheriff's office is also wanting to implement some new guardian software. We are funding their annual patrol replacement program, funding for additional medical services in the detention facility. They're upgrading their handguns, and the sheriff was successful in getting a JAG grant from the federal government, and so those expenses and revenues are also reflected in his budget. For our juvenile detention facility, we're expanding their shift differential pay structure. As you may recall, last year during the budget process, this is one of the areas in which we have a lot of turnover in this area. And so what we are proposing here this year, we implemented a shift differential for those that work midnight to 8:00 AM. They would like to expand that so that we have an additional shift differential for those who work the late shift from 6 o'clock till midnight. We also have some detention security upgrades proposed, renovation of some restrooms, and some rehabilitation to kitchens in the group homes. In the prosecutor's office, we're recommending an additional position of a paralegal. We're also recommending salary adjustments to address market wages. Their proposal is an 8% increase for employees in the prosecutor's office. They also want additional software enhancements to deal with redaction requirements that are required, and there is an expansion of their office area that is proposed. In the courts, we're recommending funding for upgrading the technology in the courtrooms. Also, there is some additional resources that are allocated in their operating budget because of some upcoming trials that are scheduled for in 2025. We have some courtroom refurbishments that are planned, and also putting a new roof on the Rooney Justice Center. As we look at the second category, the focus area of infrastructure, it's $40.1 million. There are three service areas in infrastructure, road and bridge being the largest at 57%, parks at 28%, and facilities is 15% of it. And if you look at the expenditure categories, you'll see this looks completely different than what we had in safety. The largest expenditure category for infrastructure is contractual at 35%, and what's driving that is our obligation to the road districts, in which we expense that in the contractual category. Our second is our capital, doing our projects, followed by commodities, and then personnel. So we look at the funding sources for our infrastructure focus area, you can see that the largest funding source is out of road and bridge. We then have the park fund at 20%, a capital for road and bridge, and then the general fund, and then capital for parks, and capital for general. Some of the highlights that you're going to see in the infrastructure area is under facilities, we're doing parking lot maintenance. We're also doing the roof replacement, as we talked about, and there's some improvements and maintenance at the airport, followed by funding their equipment replacement program, and also replacing seven HVAC units at the Schrader Building. For our parks, we're recommending adding a maintenance position, expanding some software that enhances our capabilities for our customers, funding phase two of the bunker improvement program at the golf course. We also have parking lot and asphalt maintenance program. This is also proposing phase one of our ADA accessibility to our docks. Vehicle replacement is planned. Also, you'll hear about our recommendation to bring some services in-house that we some do part of it, and we also contract part of it out, where we're recommending to purchase equipment to facilitate septic removal process in the parks, replacing a fence at Mount Gilead, and we're also recommending to update the park master plan, that I believe the last time the park master plan was done was in 2003. In our road and bridge, we're recommending additional funding to increase the street preservation program by 30%, also funding their equipment replacement. We're also recommending to build an additional equipment storage facility, again, putting our equipment under roof to help its life expectancy. We're replacing the Stockdale Bridge, and then noted on the next two bullets, we have several bridges that are recommended to be replaced. Some of those, we're recommending and applying for BRO funding. So what you find in the budget is both BRO revenue, but we don't know yet that we're getting it, but also it also accounts for whatever the county's expense would be if we would be successful, along with some design of some of those bridges. We look at our financially sustainable. There are, the budget is $15.6 million. You see on the right the service areas that are included in that. The two largest are the assessor's office and the IT department, with 26% of the budget for each of them, followed by the recorder and the collectors. And then some of our smaller departments fall in the financial sustainability focus area. As you look at how, the categories in which we're doing those expenses, you'll see 52% of it is in personnel, and 33% of it is in contractual, then followed by capital and commodities. The funding sources for our financial sustainability, 54% of it is coming from the general fund. 26% of that budget is coming from the reassessment or the assessor's fund, and then we have some specialty funds by the collector and the recorder, and then the capital fund. Some of the highlights that you will see in financial sustainability is there's some storage upgrade planned for IT, along with funding our equipment replacement program. And then you see in the collector and both the assessor, we are recommending increasing some operational costs for our senior property tax relief program when it comes to printing and mailings and some things like that. Along with in the assessor's budget, you'll see maintenance increase. He has been receiving vehicles, so he now has a fleet, and so we need to add fleet maintenance for that. He also has some technology replacement that he has planned. In our economy opportunity, the budget is 11.3 operating budget, and you see here we have 12 different areas in the service area in this particular focus area. The largest of it is the TIF fund. 50% of this budget is TIF. As we said earlier, 6% of our sales tax, 6% of the law enforcement sales tax goes into the TIF fund, and then we pay the TIF obligation through contractual. So you see on the right why contractual is 79% of this operating budget is because really what's driving that is the TIF obligations. After that, you'll see that administration, election commission, and the elections then are the next highest operations and services within this budget. The funding sources for the economy focus area, you'll see here is the TIF, obviously at 50%. The general fund then comes in with 44%. We have capital, we have the airport fund, and so those are our funding sources for this particular focus area. Some of the highlights that you'll see for the economy opportunity is that in planning and zoning, we are recommending funding for the local match, for the corner markings of sections in the county. It's a project that we're starting, and it's phased, and so we're recommending to continue that program. We're also recommending to upgrade a part-time code inspector to a full-time inspector. In the elections budget, the county's election budget, we have fully funded like we did this year, and so that does leave the commission some opportunity if there would be a funding ballot initiative of whatever, there is funding that could accommodate that decision. In the TIF, we've already talked about that, where we've reduced from 7% to 6% in next year's budget. And then in administration, one of the things identified in the strategic plan was a grant writer administrator, so that position is recommended, along with you'll see an increase in this budget because for the last two years, our marketing and tourism budget has been paid out of ARPA funding. And so as we know, ARPA is coming to a conclusion, and so we've moved those expenses into the general fund operating, and you'll see some discussion about World Cup marketing starting to begin in 2025. And our last focus area, but certainly one of the most important, if not the most important, is the employer of choice. The budget is $16.6 million. You'll see that we identified two service areas, the benefits fund and then the human resources department. Again, the majority of that is our benefits. You see that in expenditures, and we pay and allocate those out of the personnel expenditure category, which is why you see that at 79% of the operating budget. Our funding sources for this is primarily the health benefits fund at 60%, with the general fund paying 40% of this. Some of the highlights in this particular focus area, we are proposing a 5% cost of living increase for personnel. However, as we mentioned earlier, for our detention officers, we're recommending each detention officer position and the starting salary go up $7,000, which is greater than a 5% cost of living for everyone. We're adjusting the salary in the prosecutor's office for everyone, and that's going up 8%. We talked about the expanding the shift differential pay for the juvenile positions at the detention and group homes. We've also allocated in the budget a lump sum for the implementation of the pay classification compensation study. That's a little over $1 million that we've allocated in a lump sum. That project is underway. We hope to bring to the commission the results of that and a recommendation in the next month or so, but it will not be ready for a January 1 implementation, which is why we're recommending to set aside a lump to set aside a lump sum to have availability. We also, the commission, several months ago, approved and authorized the county to contribute to dental insurance for our employees, which is fully funded. And we're also recommending to expand a pilot program that we did this year, which is doing duty testing, physical duty testing, for those physically demanding positions, whether in our parks, our highway department, or our facilities. So we've done a pilot program on that, and so we're recommending to increase that funding that we can continue that program. When it comes to new positions for next year, again, as we talked about, we're recommending a paralegal for the prosecutor's office, a grant writer, a park maintenance position, and upgrading a part-time position to a full-time position for the code inspector. So how does it all play out when we talk about funds? So I focused on the focus areas and how it aligns with the strategic plan and your goals, but from an accounting standpoint and how we actually operate and how we will bring to you in the work sessions, it is all about the funds. And so of the $138.7 million of operating budget, 28% of the operating budget is in the general fund, 22% is in the law enforcement fund. And then you see the road and bridge is at 11%. If you add the road and bridge capital, which was at 4%, 15% is then, you know, focused on our road and bridge. And so you see here that we've sort of identified for you the 11 major funds, but the county actually has a total of 36 funds. And if we take away the ARPA fund and we take away the bond fund, that leaves us with 34. So I've identified 11 here. So at the very top of the pie chart, that miscellaneous fund at 5% is actually representing 23 small funds that we track. And when the dust settles for the budget on a countywide basis for the operating budget of $138 million, how do we spend it? We spent 49% of it on personnel across the organization. 30% is on contractual, and then we have 14% is in capital, and 8% is in commodities. And so I fondly refer to this, and I'm sorry it's tiny print, so I hope you have it up on your screen. This is the Commissioner Wagner report that, you know, he requested last year, which I think is great, because while we talk about revenues and we talk about expenditures, we really don't put it all together for you to see in one place. So I'm kind of going to walk you through this particular slide. But we are anticipating that our estimated beginning balance at the beginning of 2025 is going to be $50.6 million. Now, again, we have the ARPA, and we have the bonds, and so we take the one-time funds away, we have operating funds available of $41.7 million. What we have in the 2025 budget from operating revenues of all those categories is $111 million. Then we have our operating expenditures that we just talked about, which is actually 138.7 budgeted. So if you look at our operating revenues or operating expenditures, you see a net deficit of $27 million, and if that would all come to be true, the ending fund balance would be $14.2 million, which is basically 13% of our operating revenue. Now, I will say that the commission did pass in your budget policies target minimum fund balances, and you don't see it on this slide because it is by fund, it is not on a countywide basis, and this is reflective countywide. So when we have the workshops and we go into each fund, we will have a slide just like that, and we will reference your minimum and your target fund balance and how we're projected to do that. So again, that would be as it's budgeted. The last column is the trend analysis, right? And so again, beginning balance is the same. Our operating revenues, you know, funds available, 41.7. Because we really have trued up and worked very diligently of trying to align our revenues with what we've seen historically, you know, we do believe the operating revenues will come in at $111.3 million. As we look at the trend analysis on our expenditures, historically, we do not spend our authorized budget, our operating budget. And so typically, what we have seen is 80% of the budget has been expensed. Now, that's not all personnel. You're smiling. It isn't all categories, but a lot of it is our vacancies, but it's also in contractual because, again, typical on budgeting is you're conservative on revenues and you're high on your expenditures, right? Because you want to, you know, you want to have that capability. So in looking at that, if our trend holds, our expenditures should come in around $111 million, which if you compare that to our operating revenues, it's really a balanced budget. Actually, we're projecting that will add a little bit to fund balance, and so if that's the case, then we project that we'd end up with about $42 million in ending fund balance, which is about 38% of our operating revenues. We also try not to make budget decisions in a vacuum and just look from year to year. And so this is sort of our forecast of revenues and expenditures, and you can kind of see historically with actuals. You can see the 2025 proposed, along with in projecting 26, 27, and 28. Now, I will point out that 25 proposed here on this slide is a little bit different than the slide I just went over with you, because the one slide I just went over with you is very detailed and carving out one-time money and really getting into the weeds. This one is more of taking revenues, which it included some of our fund balance and our ARPA and everything, and just kind of did a formula calculation. But I think it's important to note here that in 25 and 26, we're certainly closing the gap between revenues and expenditures, and in 27, again, with our assumptions, you'll see that we're actually flipping and that actually we're projecting that revenues will be above expenditures, which is, you know, where you want to be. You don't want a big gap either way. So we do, but as we look at these assumptions every year, because we talked about, the economy changes, things change, but with the assumptions we have now, this is our forecast for the next several years. It's a lot of information to go over, and again, as I referenced, we're, we have workshops scheduled to go into more detail on all the different funds. So what we have before you is the budget schedule. The commission has got special meetings set. December 4th is a Wednesday, it's 9:00 AM. The meeting will be here in the chambers. We'll go over the general fund. December 11th at 9:00 AM is the law enforcement and the park fund. December 18th is the assessor's office, road and bridge. And if time, we'll start in the five-year CIP, and then we'll conclude on December the 19th, a Thursday at 9:00 AM, the very next day, so we have two that week, with a five-year CIP, allow some deliberation on what the commission, and we'll obviously be getting feedback with you, from you during the workshops. And then what we have scheduled is the public hearing and adoption of the budget for January 9th. We will follow the same format that we used last year, so we'll do presentations, we will have office holders here, department heads here, they will go over and talk about highlights of what's in their 2025 budget, they'll talk about their accomplishments this year, and certainly be available to answer any questions you may have about things that are included in the proposed 2025 budget for them. Engaging the public is very important to us, so all our workshops will be live streamed, they will be online, the recordings will also be available online after that, whether it's on our website or on YouTube. We'll be putting information out on Facebook, encouraging the residents to watch and read. We will put these PowerPoint presentations out so, out on the website, and we have a direct email address that can come to the budget team, the public, if they have questions about anything that they see or hear in any of the budget process, so that we can answer those questions for them. And with that, that is a brief overview of the proposed 2025 budget. I hope you answer any questions.
Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. And first, I want to just mention our colleague, Commissioner Lawson, who, she looked pretty ill when we started, and it didn't get any better, and so she excused herself for that reason, so just to mention that and hope that she gets to feel better.
So you want me to make sure that my numbers didn't bore her?
Oh, no, 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 right, right. I wanted you to know.
It can be riveting, I know.
And I, and I'll also say, you know, you stole my question on the Scott Wagner slide, although I will, I will ask a variation of that question, which is on the next slide with the countywide forecast, those, those projections and lines basically assume the trend analysis, I'm going to assume.
That is correct.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, that is correct. It is not based on our budget taking it forward, it is, it starts with the budget, but then it uses the trend.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll save my comments on the, how we do vacancies for another time. But the other question I did have, just so that I was following correctly, was just on the slide that had the, oh, sorry, I'll just give the question, and that's probably just as well anyway. When, when we talk about the budget on road and bridge and how it's shown here, which I think was somewhere in the $5 or $6 million range, does that assume then what also passes through to the road districts or not?
Yes.
Okay, it does.
It does.
So that number is not just what we spend on our stuff, it is basically what we are also distributing to those various jurisdictions.
Yes, if you could bear with me, I will.
Yeah, no, thank, thank you for knowing right where to go, because I, I wrote it down but couldn't find it.
Right, so on infrastructure, right? So the road and bridge budget is 57% of the 40 million, and that does include our obligation to the road districts, and we will, we have some detailed information when we get to the road and bridge fund to show those actual dollars. But that's why, if you look, and that's why I said this pie looks different.
Yeah.
And if you look at this, personnel is our least expensive category, and what's driving in that is 35% in contractual, that is the money going out to the road districts.
Right, which, which includes not only the formula, but also what we also put in ourselves to true that up.
Correct, yeah, correct. It's based on the formula, which is, the formula totals more than what we receive on our road and bridge property tax, so that's why the general fund transfers sales tax in, yes.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Were the questions or comments? Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, I don't know if you mentioned it, or I'm not seeing it, but the 911 user fee, was that factored into our revenues?
Yes, it is. Sorry if you can bear with me here. So this is the safety and well-being focus area, and so if you look here, emergency fund, 911, 2%.
Ah, okay.
So that includes our 911 user fee that we're now collecting, and so that is a portion of this 55 million.
Got it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? I don't see any others, by the way. Thank you again for a very comprehensive and a very, at least for me anyway, relatively clearly understood presentation. It does make, the numbers make a lot more sense, so thank you for putting them in, in an order that, that we can all comprehend, and our citizens can certainly comprehend. That brings us to county administrator comments.
Thank you. Just a couple of items. At your seat, you hopefully found a brochure on the senior tax program, so we've updated it a little. We've added some additional public meetings in Excelsior Springs, and so we modified this, and we're getting ready to hand this out, and it's also out on our website. We are coming to, you know, the end of the year, so we have a few more public meetings that we are holding. We do have scheduled to come before the commission, I want to say the first meeting in December to give you an update of what we've done so far, of the outreach that we've done, show you what the application looks like, and kind of walk you through how we're preparing for January 2nd, which we would expect a big turnout. And the other item I have is, the next meeting of the commission, there's a special meeting on December 4th for the budget workshop number one on the general fund, 9 o'clock here in the chambers, and then your regular commission business meeting is December 5th at 6:00 PM.
Very good. With that, we will go to commissioner comments. Commissioner Withington, do you have anything you'd like to talk about?
Yes.
You were recognized.
So just want to say congratulations to my buddy Sergeant Ty Edwards of the Clay County Sheriff's Department. Ty earned his trainer certification with, from the North America Police Work Dogs Association, so he'll be able to train our, all of our K9s going forward, save the department some money, and just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving since we won't meet next week, and since we won't meet next week, I'm going to talk some smack real quick. The Saturday after Thanksgiving, Notre Dame plays USC. Big game, Notre Dame's probably going to win. USC has pretty much sucked the rest of the year, so, so when we come back from Thanksgiving break, Notre Dame will hopefully be 2-0 since joining the commission against USC.
Commissioner Wagner?
Well, thank you. The only smack I'm talking about is lip smacking, so enjoy your Thanksgiving, and for those of you who, like myself, will be picking up kids and bringing them back for Thanksgiving, be safe in your travels and enjoy your holiday with your family. Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Thompson?
I'll just wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving, and I'll see you all in return.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Well, speaking of lip smacking, I won't talk any smack talk, in part because you're right, we're probably going to lose, it's just sad but true. Happy Thanksgiving, hope everybody has a great one. And relatedly, on my way home last week, I stopped by the Whataburger. I've never been to the Liberty location here, I think maybe it's technically Kansas City, but it's, you know, yeah. And I paid a sales tax rate of 11.75% right here at our local Whataburger. Can y'all believe that? So just a friendly reminder that we have outrageously high sales taxes around here, and sometimes I get freshly reminded of it, and, you know, we ought to, we ought to be aware of it, and over time, maybe consider doing something about it as part of the local leadership of the area. And I know we do legislative recommendations to our, you know, and we may not, for complicated reasons, we may not want to recommend taking any action on that this year, since we still have some sales taxes floating around out there as possibilities, but in the future, maybe we consider that too, because ultimately, the state's going to have to play a role in getting this under control. 11.75, can you believe that?
Was the burger worth it?
It was okay, it was all right. Anyway, for Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thank you. I also want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, as we are not going to be meeting again until after the holiday. Something I want to make mention of is several weeks ago, before a commission meeting, I interacted with the commissioner in the offices of one of our staff members. I said hello and was greeted with an unproven profanity that involved the F-word. It was basically blank U-Gerry, and the commissioner left the room. While not out of character for this person, my concern is the presence of staff, who clearly overheard the remark. The hostility, the hostile environment this creates is not the professionalism that our constituents expect from their elected officials, and puts employees who witness such behavior in a difficult position. Being responsible leaders mean that we must set an example for those we lead. I had hoped that we, as a county government, had left this divisive negativity behind us. We must all try to conduct ourselves in a dignified manner that reflects the honor that we have, that we have been given to serve the people of this county. Our citizens deserve better.